I'm in violation.
Where part of a hang up for the interim deal.
I didn't.
Is, uh, they say want to, uh...
Did that come from Mike at the end of the day, Dom?
Yeah.
I saw it in my box, I didn't get it open.
Grains, grains, they, uh, that do what subsidize low income, uh, the rate payers, what...
We're all getting tired of paying everybody else's bills, so...
Oh, you and me.
Thank you. Hey.
Amy's here.
I'm just pulling my hair back. It's a short, short hair version of the floppy bun. I like it short like that, though, it's a nice look for you. What kind of dog is that?
Great Pyrenees, White Shepherd mix.
It's a little dog.
Well, that's not something you can object to from our conversation.
Well, no.
This is the thing Jim's gonna talk about, based on the suffering streets. I don't know where this thing Bureau of Local Roads and Streets or whatever it's from, but this is where it talks about the size of streets for the market area, so that's what he's gonna talk about.
Can I have this?
Can I have it, sure, no problem.
I don't wanna steal it from him.
I'll have it on digital, but...
How are you, Amy?
Good, aren't you?
Hey, uh, he sounded petty, totally new.
I should make you aware of, uh, IBRD stuff.
Mm-hmm, good.
We had a building in grounds meeting today that the cost because of materials and stuff for this modification, they wanted to use IBRD, it's starting to get astronomical. And we're gonna have to have a talk between our four people that represent the board, what we wanna do.
He seemed to understand.
Well, we are going to talk about, it's on the agenda. Yes. That'd be wonderful, I'd love for you to give comments and everything up there. So you have an opportunity for agenda items, and then we, when we get to on the agenda, the council's gonna discuss essentially, I'm gonna have the, ask the engineer to make the presentation on what the rules are based on, and then I'm gonna have a question for the attorney, what are we allowed to modify from that? If you'd like to ask a specific...
Yeah.
So your opportunity to speak will be in the beginning, and then one at the end on any topic at, down here. So, yeah, so if you wanna speak about agenda items, you can speak here, and, or if you weren't happy with how, what we decided here, or what we talked about, you can talk again at public comment, down here.
Yeah, if you could. I didn't think it was that big of a...
Amy, is there copies of the agenda out there?
Oh, there are, yeah.
You've got a bunch of ordinance.
I have four for the ambulance, and I'd like to make one with every, the other things being appendixes to it, you know, like a...
I wasn't sure if you were willing to add it to the, that we're modifying it.
Too damn busy as a matter of fact.
There you go, we're gonna have this as a second item.
It is a separate item.
No, it just gets me in trouble with my wife, she never sees me.
We should've known, we should've known that.
Yeah, we should've before we went there, yeah, you're right.
All right.
Yes. Remember I told you I drafted the contract?
Yeah.
I did, I remember now.
Collier.
Yeah.
This is the ordinance Oakspire Valley used when they bought and redid that building down there.
Mm-hmm.
I just called, I thought a while, I've heard people talk about it, I'll copy, get a copy of it.
Yeah.
So, and that's all it is, is a copy of it.
Yeah.
Change it all around or...
No, just, just what they did. I can do it.
Call the Ogusby, uh, working meeting to order.
Amy's not here.
Amy's not here.
She's making copies.
This is the document that Oakspire Valley used to rehab that building, it's not on the agenda tonight, but it's just a, an FYI.
To rehab a building?
Yeah.
Oh, yeah. So now, relax.
Relax. Wrong call.
All right.
Here.
Dawnin?
Here.
Corinne?
Here.
Yeah.
Hi.
Pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Is there any public comments on agenda items only? And then we'll just move on. If you're gonna have a comment, please come to the podium.
That's on the agenda, right?
Yes, it is.
Oh, yeah, you can, you can have it. I don't care. Yeah, I was gonna get my key, but I didn't think...
Hi, yes, we have, um, five residents from Moore Street that are here to talk about changing the no parking ordinance that has just been enforced. Anything else, is that fine?
Just state your name, please.
Erin Myers.
And, what, can you address maybe what your concerns are, or your thoughts on the...
Um, the concern is that there's now no parking on our street, a street that has always had parking on it. We've lived there for twelve years. Um, at this point, like I said, there's, there's absolutely nowhere for us to park our vehicles. Now we have vehicles that are needing to be parked in different spaces outside of our street, like in our neighbors' yards, um, in our neighbors' driveways, they're kind enough to allow us to do that right now. We have absolutely no parking if we were to, um, have, say, like, for our John's birthday parties, there's nowhere for anybody to park on our street now. I have an eighty-six-year-old grandfather, if he were to come over, there's no parking on my street, or, um, even on Columbia, uh, which is, intersects our streets. Um, I have no idea where he would park if he were to come over. Also, um, I, we had been speaking with a realtor recently, and I was told that this could possibly affect, um, the value of our home now, on a street that has no parking. So that, that, that is one of our biggest concerns.
Ma'am, could you, if you flipped the switch on the mic, it'll...
I've never been here before.
Don't, don't worry.
We'll, we'll walk you through it, no problem.
I wouldn't know how to use it.
Okay, and, and where do you live at?
On Morris Street.
On Morris?
What address is it?
Four two four.
Four two four. What's your, so he's on East Morris?
Yes, that's East Morris, on the east side of...
And there's no parking on either side?
No parking on either side of the street.
Okay.
I thi- I think it's been in effect, but they just started enforcing it maybe a few weeks ago, so we're out there.
Uh, not, not that I have ever known, we've, we've lived there for twelve years.
But the, but the ordinance has been on file for a number of years.
We would've never known that.
Well...
The city never enforced it, so we would've never known that.
I don't think it's ever been enforced before, is, so that you all know the situation. It's not something this council did recently, it was done a long time ago, and, uh, it just has never been enforced.
Well, I mean, we're here to...
Are you aware of any accidents or any traffic concerns as a result of parking on that street?
Not since we've been there for twelve years, yeah.
I just thought we should talk about that.
Yeah, no, not, not since we've been there, like I said, it's, 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 it's impossible at this point to have as many vehicles as we have. My husband works for John's, he's been parking in front of our home for, um, about seven years now. He has toolboxes in there with, uh, a lot of expensive tools in it, so it was nice for him to be able to park in front of our house where he could keep a good eye on his truck. Now we, um, our neighbors are nice enough across the street to allow us to park in an extra driveway that they have, but again, we can't keep a good eye on the vehicle. So that's difficult.
Oh, good point.
I appreciate you coming in, uh, to help shed a little light on this. I know I talked to quite a few residents around the city over the last month or so, uh, Morris as well, uh, and I, and I actually asked people to come in so they could speak their opinion of what their concerns are. Um, a little bit of a background, a lot of this started actually a couple of years ago, where we, we went out and we surveyed, and we actually tried to make pat, traffic patterns better for the seven streets that we surveyed and added no parking to one of the sides. Then I started getting a lot of people that wanted to make more modifications. Well, when we started discussing this over many, many months, some people started getting upset, saying, why would you enforce some standards and not others? So we did a survey, uh, the police department kinda went through, and we found out that we had a whole bunch of inconsistencies throughout the city of, that didn't match our ordinances. So we discussed this at a, I think it was our, might've been our last working meeting a while ago, of what we wanted to do about it. The, the thought process, we, we wanted to make sure that we were in compliance with our ordinances, and then discuss what we wanna be able to modify to change, and so that's what we're here tonight. So on the agenda, I've actually asked the, the city engineer to come to kind of explain a little bit what these rules are based on, um, and then after that's done, we'll, we'll speak with the attorney to see what we can modify, uh, you know, 'cause the goal is if we can find ways to make residents happy, but still make sure that we're obeying all kind of laws and stuff, that's kind of the goal. So I do appreciate you coming and invoicing your concerns, so we'll talk about it when we get to it.
Thanks.
Next on the agenda is, is really not a, uh, just a...
I think you got another one, Dom.
I'm sorry?
I think you got another.
Oh, sure.
Hi, I'm Mike Lee Park, I live on two thirty South School Avenue, and I have a very similar concern as to the previous person. Um, and I don't know, uh, there's, there's always been parking on both sides of the street. It's by, South School Avenue is between Walnut Street and First Street, right behind Preys Funeral Home. So there's always been parking on both sides, and now there's gonna be park, there's, there's gonna be no parking on either side. There's already been two signs put up on the west side of the street, but there isn't anything on the east side of the street, but there are markings where it's supposedly gonna be the signs put up there. So, um, there again, I have no place to park because there's already no parking on First Street, on my side of the street. Um, and I wouldn't be able to park on either side of the school street, so I'm pretty much, I think, I've got nowhere to park. I'd have to go down the alleyway, and then, or down the street, and I'd have to be competing with my neighbors, which would kinda cause some friction there because they already have a car, you know, there's a couple cars parked with a person across the street, and someone on caddy car for me too, so... You know, in fact, I really have nowhere to, nowhere to park if, if they do put that, that sign where there's no parking either side of the street. I would be, I have no problem with no parking on one side of the street, even if it's on my side or the other side, but, uh, either way, I'd be able to, I have to be able to keep an eye on the vehicle. And I just have a very short driveway, and I have a truck, so I cannot park in the driveway because then I over, I, I'm over the sidewalk. So I'm kinda, I'm in a tough situation there, and it's only, only this between First Street and Walnut Street where the issue, where they're gonna put a sign in that particular stretch.
Okay, that's, that's why we're all here tonight, to discuss it. And part of this, so people understand, when you pass an ordinance and you don't enforce it, and then something happens, what's the first thing you see? You see some, excuse me, some attorney filing a lawsuit, uh, and, and we need to come back and, and correct some of these. So that, we'll, we'll get there, it's just sometimes the process is a little, uh, lengthy and time-consuming.
That's why I tried to bring it up, you know, before a sign would be put there, possibly wouldn't have to be put there. And also, besides me, it would affect Preys Funeral Home, because if they line up cars to go to funeral procession, if there's no park at either side, kinda...
We understand that, it'd be kinda tough to hold a funeral.
Yeah.
How long have you lived there, Mr. Lee Park?
Uh, I've lived in that neighborhood for thirty-two years, roughly.
And there have been cars parking on one or both sides of the street?
Yes.
And have you noticed any traffic concerns, any safety issues, any accidents?
I haven't particularly seen an accident, but it is tight if there's both sides, if there's parking.
It is.
If there's, 'cause school functions too, Washington School, a lot of people park there, so...
Sure.
On both sides, I, I can make it through, I can navigate through, I mean, there is a way to get, but it is tighter fit, so some people may have a hard time navigating if there's parking on both sides of the street.
And I believe so- some of the impetus behind that is, on those more narrow streets, when you have, uh, parking on both sides and then an ambulance is called, they have very little ability or a fire truck,
Yeah.
little ability to navigate and do what they have to do.
And I can see that, you know, I, I did participate in the survey for one side of the street for other parts of the city, and I don't really have a problem necessarily on my side, but just having no parking on either side really puts me in a tough position.
I think we understand what, what your problem is, and it's our problem too.
Yeah, if I can, if I can make a comment on it too, I, I also have gone down that road coming home from work when there's a wake going on, and there's cars on both sides. I've already bumped a mirror going down there, because you cannot, I mean, my truck was an older truck, it had the big camping mirrors on it, but I mean, it's very tight on both sides when you got both, both sides there. And, uh, the no parking signs now will keep people off of the west side, and I think his concern is just, you know...
When you can't have any.
Yeah.
Yes.
Understood? Thank you.
Thank you.
The, uh, next item on the end is just, uh, kinda something that we've done for the, uh, IBEW employees. Um, we've standardized their time sheets, everything goes into, uh, computer. Uh, we've eliminated, uh, uh, the different ways the departments were keeping their time. It's just a, uh, kind of a bookkeeping improvement, and it makes it easier for the city clerk.
Dom, you mentioned, um, IBEW, but is this for all city workers, like police, ambulance?
Well, I, it's, it's our goal to, at some point in time. Uh, the police, uh, run a, run a little different, uh, timesheet. The, uh, fire and ambulance is another little different, and, and to try to make it easier for the clerk, somebody comes in, they can just punch a, uh...
Oh, I'm definitely for it, but I was, I didn't know if it affected the, it's not all city employees.
We just got the IBEW people done now.
Okay.
Well, our goal is to get them all under a standardized timesheet.
Thank you.
Uh, next, and I put this on the, uh, on the agenda, parking lot on Walnut Street, uh, consider as to, uh, what to do once the Reisner building is demolished. Uh, at last council meeting, uh, we had Mr. Pavanato, he came in and, uh, looking to, um, to purchase the, uh, the lot and, uh, and tear it down. Uh, and what he wanted to do is basically expand, uh, his yard. Uh, I've, uh, talked to Mr. Clennard about, uh, okay, if we, uh, if the city does decide to go a different route, what's it gonna cost us? Everything comes down to money. Uh, a ballpark figure, and there's been some discussion, uh, to, uh, to put a, make that area a parking lot to, uh, help alleviate the, uh, parking problems down there. And of course, we can't do anything now until, uh, the fall of the year, is it November first is when we can do it? Jim? So, but, but anyway, we, because of the, we would disturb the Indian bats, we can't, uh, proceed with tearing down the building. Um, just a, a ballpark estimate to, uh, to put a parking lot in there would be about twenty-five thousand, and then we could probably add another ten thousand for fencing, shrubs, and the rest of that kind of stuff. So that'll be a council decision, and, uh, we can discuss it, or just, uh, discuss it at a, at a future meeting. And if we just wanna move on and...
Yeah, I'd recommend that we talk about it again after it's been demolished, I mean, I, we, we got the grant for it.
What we're gonna do.
Yeah, we got the grant for it, we don't wanna lose that.
No, that, that, we have to get...
September, October, I'd prefer to have a plan before we tear it down, though.
Yes.
Like right now, we, we've still got three months before we really have to make any kind of decision.
Would there be, would, so let me ask you, would there be time yet this year, if we decide to go the route into the parking lot, would there be time this year yet to still do both at the same year?
I don't think you can pour some months in...
We could fill and put gravel in, though.
November or summer, though.
Yeah. Never know.
And it probably would be better to let it all settle for a while before you start pouring on it too, through the winter.
You still want gravel base, I would guess.
You might be able to put the gravel base in and compact it, and then wait, don't you think, Jim?
When was any of that thing, was that November fifteenth, or was it October fifteen?
November first, I think.
November first?
Yeah, it's November.
Why don't we talk about this at our next, uh, working meeting, which would probably be sometime in the third quarter, like either September, October, then?
All right.
Sound good?
Next is number seven on the agenda, discuss sidewalks, ordinance passed in twenty oh eight, and enfor- and enforcement of the ordinance hasn't been enforced. So we've been, uh, oh eight, what do we, um, half thirteen years? And, uh, we sure that, we sure can't go back and hit every house that's been built since oh eight that doesn't have a sidewalk. But we either have to, uh, go back X amount of, uh, time and say, hey, if you've built a house within the, uh, last couple of years, you gotta put your, you gotta put a sidewalk in. Um, we've included to kinda correct this problem is, you don't get an occupancy, uh, permit until you comply with the ordinance, till you put a sidewalk in. Unfortunately, we've got, uh, some people that have built homes in the last, uh, two to four years that had basically said, go pack sand, we're not gonna put one in. So that's the dilemma that we're faced, and that this, this council has to take some action on.
I, I'm very much in favor of not allowing occupancy until the, the sidewalk is there.
We've instituted that.
I, I think that's a great, I, I do have some questions over the list, though, that was provided us, because I'm gonna be honest, I see my house on it. Ooh, what a surprise when I saw that. However, my home was built in six and first sold in seven, and this didn't come until eight.
So this, so this list is, so, so keep in mind, so there's fourteen houses on this list, and the, the clerk's office hasn't had a chance, this is just what the street department went through to identify which homes don't have the sidewalks. They have to go through, you have to find when the houses were built to see, because each, I guess each neighborhood might have a di- slightly different timeframe, the one we know about was the most recent, was two thousand eight, but there might be people that, that could still fall in or, or not, so we haven't drilled down which ones are. So the point is, there are gonna be some that are within violations of, of that statute.
I just questioned the...
Not necessarily everybody on this list.
Particularly number eleven. But, um, but when I looked at it, it talks about the front of the home, and my, my, I do have a sidewalk in front of my home, however, I live on a cul-de-sac, so my side yard doesn't have a, and so is that considered, it doesn't, it's my side yard that doesn't have the, the sidewalk.
That is a great question, if that's something that...
And I didn't see it in the ordinance.
And I haven't looked at your ordinance in detail about that, Carrie, but when people live on corners, most street-side facing, um, sides of the house are considered front yards. Um, you might have two front yards.
So I have two front yards?
Even for someone that lives in like a circle or a courtyard, it's a denning thing?
Yeah, that's, it's a, it's faces the street.
I mean, I'll look at the ordinance if you want, but almost everyone I've ever seen, because if you face the street, you got two front yards.
Yeah. Well, again, I was in, built in six and, first sold in seven, so I might've...
The reality of that is, you know, your front yard may be fifty, sixty, eighty feet wide, those side yards are often a hundred and twenty-five or a hundred and fifty feet.
That's correct.
So there's a lot more sidewalk to be put on...
That's correct.
What we consider a side yard, even though the ordinance may say it's a front yard.
So I think maybe we need some clarity on the, the ordinance itself, and then, um, clean up the list a little bit of, of what actually meets it. But, once we've got the, in place that we're not doing, um, passing occupancy until the sidewalk's there, do we have any recourse of going back one year, two year, ten year?
I, I think you do, but my concern would be to limit it. So now you're discriminating between the ones that haven't been here six years ago, but you're forcing the people that haven't been here two or four years ago to put them in.
Mm-hmm.
So I think if you're gonna enforce the ordinance, you gotta enforce it equally across the board.
Yeah, I, my concern is the ones that, that built the house, knowing that they had to get that done, I, I'd like to see that solved. I'd like to see it solved everywhere throughout the city, to make it safer for kids to walk to school and all that kind of stuff, um, but if, if they didn't legally have to, that might be challenging. I will say that this, uh, fall, they are reopening back up the Safe Route to School program, which I'm looking to hope to apply for, because you can, if, if there's a problem with sidewalk need, you can get that done within two mi- well, two miles covers the entire city if there's residential for children walking there. So I'm hoping that might be our means to find funding to get places that were not required by ordinance. But I'd like to start with, with these, but you're right, we do need to clean up the list a bit, get those questions answered to see if, is it, is it for main streets, does it include courts, or whatever like that, and, and kinda proceed.
I might provide a subdivision or subdivision, you're right?
Yeah.
So our subdivision, we've been working for years, way back, has required sidewalks. And certain subdivisions during the transmission phase have been, have required, so... So the subdivisions that are along Fox Street West and Columbia, and Arbor, and Hickory, and Oakwood, from Park down to Roundhouse, those were already, but the various subdivisions, and the high subdivision, there was a point where we were trying to plan through that they weren't going to be anymore. And it's required sidewalks on both sides of the streets, on all streets, for that, in that subdivision. So it's, it's on the, the subdivision plan.
But then we didn't enforce anything.
I gotta put a sidewalk in, I'll do it.
And that subdivision was approved in nineteen ninety, so we could prove that, required a sidewalk, great day to that subdivision.
I knew this list was complicated, that there was different, I knew two thousand eight was the big one, but there was other dates out there too, for, depending on what section of the city people were in.
I can't remember the name of the subdivision down south on, you know, three fifty one seventy one, I'm pretty sure that was supposed to have sidewalks in there.
And, and so we're clear too, guys, it, it came up earlier this year, when I first started taking this tenure, that there was a house that was being constructed, and the sidewalk couldn't be finished due to weather concerns or something at that point in the year, so there are gonna be times when somebody's gonna come and apply for an occupancy permit, but the yard isn't graded yet, and the, the front sidewalk can't be put in due to the weather. So in those cases, I've suggested to the clerk that they have to escrow enough funds to allow for the construction of that sidewalk, um, once the weather improves.
Well, that's a good answer, coming forward, um, but then I guess the real question is, 'cause there's, there is more houses than just these, um, but again, they were, they've been here for so many years that there's not a requirement for it. So I don't know, do we just wait for a grant opportunity, or do we look to say, hey, there's a requirement, people need to put in sidewalks?
Well, in, in some of that, some of that, uh, especially if, if the house has been there for, uh, ten, twelve years or whatever, they've got their yard landscaped, and that's gonna create a nightmare. Uh, in front of the house, this is one thing, when you run around these cul-de-sacs, it'd be, um... if you think you've got problems with the parking. Way to, way to that happen. But we gotta, we gotta come up with a common sense approach to resolve. The one person that came in here, uh, um, last fall just told me flat out that, uh, they weren't gonna put it in. He says, well, I guess your attorney and our attorney will discuss it. And we'll move forward, that's all. But we, we need to come up with a realistic solution to address this.
And the reality is, the cul-de-sacs, like the one by your house, Carrie, does not have the safety concerns the street in front of your house has.
Correct.
There's a lot more traffic on that street than there is in that cul-de-sac. So it could be that moving forwards, cul-de-sac should be exempted from the requirement, uh, if that's a concern in, in your ordinance.
That's something that we can probably modify, then? Yeah, I, I'll, I'll admit that the driving factor that I have as concern is when I've had parents talk to me and, and I've seen it to where kids are walking the street and they, there's, there's no sidewalk in some cases, and then they get out and they're, they're actually on the edge of the street instead of walking through the yard or the mud or something like that. And, and I'm thinking as a municipality, if there's things that we can do to try to prevent that, that's the goal. I'm not trying to make somebody's life difficult for their yard, I'm trying to make things better, safer for kids.
Well, for anybody out walking their dog.
For anybody, for anybody.
Yeah.
Well, it's not run this to death, though. I think everybody's waiting for number eight anyway. No parking zones, parking, uh, at Memorial Park. And let me just start it off the, um, we realize that, uh, some of these old ordinances, we've gotta come back and address it. Uh, you're not gonna be able to have no parking on both sides of the street. Uh, we gotta afford the residents, uh, a place to park in front of their houses or across the street from their houses. The, uh, the other part of this is, uh, um, when I talk about Memorial Park, people keep infringing, uh, to get closer and closer so they don't have to walk so far. And, uh, pretty soon as you come off of Clark Street and, and you start making that curve, uh, you have cars parked on, on both sides of the street. And that street is wide enough, so if you get up a little bit further, you can, uh, you can, you can park on both sides. But, um, you know, some of these kids are excited coming from a ballgame or whatever. They're coming between two sets of cars and, uh, and, and we've gotta come back and address that, that part of it. Either, uh, through some, you know, no parking up to this point or up to where the, uh, the little parking place is at Memorial Park from where you come off of Clark Street.
Is there any way to expand actual parking, a, a parking lot at that park?
We've got a, we've got a parking lot, uh, that's across the street. Uh, it parks probably a, a dozen vehicles or, or more somewhere in there. Uh, and they park, there's plenty of parking there. But, you know, it's, if I park here, I can save myself walking, uh, fifty feet or whatever, and I think that's what it comes down to.
I'm just thinking for a ballgame, tw- a dozen vehicles doesn't cover parents for both teams.
Oh, no, 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 I'm not, I'm not suggesting that we eliminate the parking on both sides of the street around Memorial Park. Them, them roads are, are wide enough to handle that, it's just that when they encroach upon the curve, that becomes a problem. And the last thing we want is to have, uh, have somebody get hit by a car. The other part of this is, uh, uh, the no parking zones, we have to go back, uh, take a look at where we, where we've got it. Doesn't make sense today. Uh, I understand that, uh, you know, the parking on, on one side, but we, we can't come back and say, well, we can't park on both sides. You know, the funeral, how are they gonna, are they gonna do with the casket, carry the block before they put it in the earth?
Yeah, well, this is, I'm hoping, I'm hoping we'd be able to do this thing in two sections here, actually. The first thing, I, I invited, uh, our city attorney to come to hopefully shed a little bit of light on-
City attorney?
I'm sorry, I apologize. The city engineer, that's, that's the second part, that's the second part.
Oh, you've been demoted.
Oh. Uh, so, to, to explain a little bit of why these ordinances probably are the way they are, and why they've been, why they've been in the book the originally way they are, cause when it was explained to me, it, it's very confusing. Minor connectors, collectors, major collectors, all the different types of streets and what the rules are. And then after we go through that, then the next part is kind of a legal question. Based on, based on those rule sets, what are we allowed to modify?
I think we change the ordinance how we want, no matter what.
Well, I-
And I think legally you can do that, Jason.
Oh, we could?
Yeah. I mean, unless there's some statute that says you have to do this, which I don't think there is, Jim, there may be generally accepted rules, which I think Jim's gonna explain to us as to how these parking areas should be designed and, you know, what the width of lanes of travel is and all that stuff. But unless there's some statute that says you can't do it, I agree with Tom, I think you can go back and modify.
Jim, could you, uh, shed some light on where, where this, uh, kind of stems from? Thanks.
So, I, I researched in the, uh, the Department of Transportation Bureau of Local Roads manual.
Jim, could you-
It's not on?
Not on, I know.
Are you getting close enough, maybe? Is it too low?
No. There you go.
There it's on now.
There you go.
So, um, there's a Bureau of Local Roads manual that covers streets in communities our size in Peru and La Salle. So they, they classify them as rural and they classify them as urban. So when you're in town like this, they're urban, and there are basically three different types. There's the local streets, there's the collectors, and the arterials. The arterials are the, the, the busier streets. You, you have to have parking on, you have to have two lanes of traffic at all times, arterials and collectors. Local streets, you can get by with one. So, uh, and the recommended parking width is eight feet on the local street. Alright? So in order to have parking on a local street, you need at least thirty foot face-to-face a curb. That way you have eight foot of parking on one side, eight foot of parking the other, and that leaves you one twelve to fourteen foot lane for traffic to drive in. Alright? Um, when you get up to the higher speed streets like arterials, they recommend ten foot length parking. Just to give people more room to get their car door open without getting taken off by traffic. Our ordinances, our new subdivision ordinances require our streets to be thirty-three foot back-to-back a curb. And that provides us just under thirty-one feet face-to-face, which allows parking on both sides and, and one lane of traffic. Alright? The Department of Transportation shrinks that down to straight-up thirty feet. We're gonna use the only Department of Transportation money, motor fuel tax money to reconstruct the street. Unless we get a variance from Department of Transportation, we have to be a minimum thirty foot wide if we're going to allow parking on both sides of the street. Now, there are a lot of streets that, that are only twenty-four foot wide, if they're that wide. And that's why, you know, you can only have parking on one side. If I remember right, um, Hazen and Bennett and some of those, not Bennett, uh, Swift, that run north and south near the grade school. Some of those are really narrow. At one point, we tried to get federal, uh, state motor fuel tax funds to reconstruct it, and they, they said no. You can use it, but you have to widen that out to, so you have it, you know, more room. Um, and that, there are rules that the chief probably know about, um, that are under the only vehicle code. Uh, you can't park in front of a public or private driveway within an intersection, on the curvy, mealy opposite ends of a safety zone, uh, within fifteen foot of a fire hydrant, twenty foot of a crosswalk, thirty foot of an approach leg to an intersection, so Dom, that might help your intersection problem, getting around the corner and be able to see. Twenty foot of a driveway entrance to any fire station, uh, fifty foot of a railroad, railroad crossing, bridges, and then whatever the local ordinances-
There's nothing about directly a, a cross from somebody's driveway? You can't park in front of, you said, but can you be directly behind?
Yes. In front of a public or private driveway, so that would be on the opposite side of the street, right, chief? No, you can do that? Same said, I don't park across people's driveway, just not wise. So, so those are the generalities, you need an eight foot parking lane and you need at least room for, twelve foot wide for a lane.
So I guess the key is, I'm curious about, is, is there a, a minimum distance that it's saying that it has to be to allow parking on both sides or even one side that it's recommending?
They're saying a minimum thirty foot face-to-face, that you're gonna have parking on both sides.
What about for one side?
For one side, I'd take that. Twenty-four would work.
Twenty-four.
You could buy, probably could buy a twenty-two.
So the two key things I heard you talk about there was one, recommended. Is that just recommended or are those things that we are required to abide by? And that might be more of a legal question.
Right, they're, they're, following guidelines apply to urban facilities, alright?
So guideline.
And you have to follow those guidelines.
Ellen writes these in the perfect world scenario, alright?
Yep, recommended.
Must be real here.
And then the-
Now, you, you gotta think, back when some of these subdivisions back over here were built, not everybody had two or three cars.
Yeah.
RVs that were parked, you know, driveways you can't, what's that?
And they weren't as big. And they weren't as big. The vehicles.
Yeah.
Uh, some are, some are.
So that was, that-
Yeah, you're right.
That was the first key thing I heard was recommended. The other thing, though, you did talk about motor fuel tax funds for parking on both sides. So are you saying, if, if we were to modify our ordinance to allow parking on one side or, or whatever, because it's only a guideline, would that bar us from getting motor fuel tax funds for that street?
To reconstruct it, it might, you'd have to go get a variance from Department of Transportation and have a very good reason to get that variance. Like, the houses are so close, there's no room for right-of-way additional right-of-way traffic.
I think we could talk about changing that when that resurfacing is gonna happen, though, if we really were that worried about it.
Resurfacing and reconstruction are different things.
Oh, yeah, there we go, that's what I was wondering, next question was, is that the same thing or not?
No, that's the same. Resurfacing, the mill and fill, they don't get after you about that.
And I don't know, you're, you're hanging up on the, um, recommended or the guideline.
Well-
Sometimes the guidelines are a little rule.
Well, and I guess that's-
If you had to go to a court or-
So then that's, so then that's my legal question for it, because, you know, we, we wanna do right by residents. We want them to be happy, but we don't wanna break any laws and, and get anybody in trouble or anything like that. If we were to modify, let, let's say, they're not, let's say these streets, cause I know some of them are less than twenty-four feet. So they're out of the guideline, I guess, for how wide they are. If we were to modi- modify our ordinances to, to not say parking prohibited along both sides, and we change it to just prohibit it on one side, is that put us in any kind of a legal jeopardy or anything like that?
I don't think so, Jason.
Okay.
And, and do we have any streets, Jim, in town that are less than twenty-two, twenty-four feet wide? Or we could allow parking on one side?
I, I think you have, the ones like Hazen and Swift, north of Durant. And then, yeah, the third street's really tight.
Yeah, then you got Jones, and I mean, Jones is pretty narrow. But I mean, it's-
I'm not familiar with Morris and all the-
Twenty-two feet narrow? Twenty-two feet narrow? Pretty, pretty narrow road.
I mean, I guess we could take a look at it as we move forward and consider each street, but in my mind, I think there's very few streets where you couldn't have parking at least on one side.
Correct. And Morris is really not, I don't know, anyone that uses it besides the people that really live on that road, I don't think anyone else really, unless-
Yeah, that was one of the biggest arguments for this, for our streets, not really what I consider thorough.
Wow.
Right.
I mean, there's really no reason for somebody to be on Morris to live, but if you get to the end of Blackster, left to the dead end, if you get to the end of Blackster, right, it just takes you up to Memorial Park.
So you're not seeing traffic, um, accidents or issues, it's just, right. Correct.
You get through to Richards Street, but then again, you wouldn't, there would be really no reason for you to think that there's much easier ways to get to all the parking now.
Mm-huh. Right. And Richards is that kinda dead end, too, so.
And it's an extra white street, too, it's not very narrow. You can park on both sides of the street, it's still very easily cleared off.
I'm not sure exactly what it is, but Morris is-
We'd be able to park both sides of the street in the image, right, right down the middle?
Alright.
Every, everything in Oglesby is a local street, except you have five streets that are classified as major or minor collectors. So one of your major collectors is Second Street, that runs from three fifty-one to Woodland. And then Woodland's a collector from Second Street up to Clark. And Clark is a major collector from Woodland to three fifty-one, so you got that loop. And then you've got Mormon Street that's a minor collector, and I think that's from three fifty-one out to city limits and probably beyond, as you get into the county.
West Mormon, right.
And then you've got Walnut Street, all of Walnut Street's a minor collector.
So is there any different rules? Walnut's probably not a, a concern, but like, like the other ones you just listed, though, uh, are there any concerns or special rules with those we have to be, pay attention to?
Not really, I mean, the, the idea would be you wanna maintain two lanes of traffic on those at all times, because, because by being collectors, that means that the traffic volumes are higher and you're very likely to have opposing traffic. And if you have parking on both sides, that eliminates the possibility that vehicle, one of the two vehicles be able to bounce over, get out of the way for the other traffic. So if you run into that, then you gotta back up and only allow parking on one side.
So, in, so in reality, so, okay, it's a recommended guideline, and if we were to change our ordinances to allow parking on one side, that, that could possibly make us to where we wouldn't qualify for motor fuel tax for reconstruction, but not necessarily resurfacing?
Correct.
Okay. So then I guess the, the question I would have for the lawyer, the attorney, is, uh, if that doesn't put us in any kind of jeopardy, then the only risk that we're really taking on is, do we wanna risk not being able to have money for reconstruction for those roads? Uh, because if that's the case, then that's the decision, if we wanna open it up for parking or not, then.
But some of them are, like Morris, is not a very long road, that one in particular. I, I don't know how much, I, I guess in the greater, grander scheme of things, how much that would come into play with not having those dollars.
Jim, would the, would the parking being allowed or disallowed affect the width that's required for the reconstruction anyway?
Yes.
Okay. I wasn't sure about that, that's what I wanted to ask.
So if we reconstruct, we can just widen the road for parking, if that happens?
Right.
Okay. So in other words, if we were gonna do reconstruction to make it eligible, you'd have to be, make part of the reconstruction, widening it to whatever the new standard would be?
Right, or you'd have to go to the Department of Transportation and get what they, they call a variance, and have a very good reason other than cost.
Well, my thoughts on it are, if, uh, if the city's not gonna be held in any kind of liable situation, if there would be an accident on the road to modify it, um, and that's what people want, in that case, I'd say, yeah, why don't we open it up to where we allow, we look at the ordinance, find the ones that, that are listed as parking on both sides not allowed, and allow parking on one of the sides.
Can at least start there, Jason.
I think that's a good idea.
Florence is definitely another one that I'm hearing about.
Yep.
They're driving faster than usual down Florence now, cause there's no cars on the road anymore.
Right.
You know, and in order for me to correct that ordinance the way you want it, I need to know it's this street, from this street to this street, on which side you wanna park, which side you don't wanna park, we have to be very specific.
So I, I think that's good news, residents will be happy to hear that. I, the, the other thing, I, I just wanna, some people, when they came back, they were very happy that we made the, uh, changes to the, in the past, where we limited parking to, to one side to make it better, but some of them were angry and upset that it was their side of the street, that the no parking was. And I just wanted to make it clear, what that was based on was, we, we looked at what sides of the street had the most amount of fire hydrants. The ones that had the fire hydrants is the ones we decided to make no parking, since it was already limited anyways.
Florence, I'd look at, so Florence on one side has an alley, so that, that side parks off the alley, and on the other side does not, and they have no access to their backyard, so that side is, got one driveway and that's it. So that's something else we probably would wanna look at, is where they're parking at compared to how much parking they have and where the house is at.
Well, how about we look at it and then, um, we'll see if we can get some modifications up for the next, uh, council meeting, and we'll put some, some recommended changes and kinda go from there.
No, it's great.
If that's not gonna put us in any kind of jeopardy or legal bind.
It's where we need to start to address and correct it.
You said it, if from curb to curb-
Face-to-face to curb.
It's thirty foot, you can park on your both sides?
Yes, on a local street. Now, now, we require any new subdivisions, we have to make that thirty-three foot back, back-to-back, so a little more room there to help out, so.
I do it, sir?
We're good.
Thank you, Jim, thank you, Pat.
This next one is just a short one, it's just commissioners, inventory, all city equipment, trucks, trailers, and et cetera. equipment, trucks, trailers, and et cetera. If each department would, would do that, with the, um, um, I guess, uh, upgrade of the, um, uh, the old fire station, we can keep all our equipment inside in a closed building. What we gotta do now is to go back and check, is there, is there something that we don't need? Is there something that, uh, we got two of and we need to, we can get rid of one? You know, we've gotta insure them, license them, and everything, um, just don't wanna have a piece of equipment that, uh, that we're not using, or maybe that we should've retired some years ago, so.
Wouldn't our insurance, our risk side of our insurance have a listing of all of our city equipment, trucks and trailers?
Yes, and I wanna make sure that we're, um, that we have, we still have that equipment that we're paying the insurance on.
So maybe A- Amy could send those out to the, those ambulance, fire-
We do it.
-city trucks and that, and then they can then double check off of there that we still have it, we don't-
When, when do we usually do it for the insurance, Amy? Is there a certain time or a month?
Maybe the spring.
Okay. So do we just do it? My next question.
Um, we have not done it this year.
Okay.
I didn't get it this year, but I will get it, and then send it to the department.
Okay.
Okay.
Perfect.
Next is a discussion on departments' personal equipment policy.
So, in everybody's packet, they have a couple examples. We shared this with the, with the union. We, Mayor and I were talking, discussing that we didn't wanna add it to the union contracts, we wanted to add control of it. But for example, if you, if you recall, one of the items we talked about was the personal clothing allowance that they have. We decided not to remove that, but the, the problem was, certain departments, we have requirements that we have to require fire retardant gear for them. And one of the things I noticed was, we didn't have any kind of guidelines or stipulations. I would just see something come across for bills for a couple hundred dollars worth of fire retardant clothing.
And they're costly.
And I go, okay. And then two months later, I find another bill that comes across for a couple hundred dollars more for fire retardant pants. And it just, it keeps, so my thought process was, who's, who's tracking this? And we don't have a guideline. We do have to provide it, it is required by the contract. So, my thought process was, in every department is a little bit different of what they require. So, I, I drafted three of them up, uh, street, electric, and then I did have one for, for parks and maintenance, even though I don't, that's not my, uh, my department. But they're all very similar, they talk about, uh, what the city will do and what the workers will do. And it talks, it gives a cost amount for each one, and we kinda used accordance with, uh, we compared it to other cities, municipalities, and, and with the IBW of what they do. So I believe for electric department, for example, it puts out for five hundred dollars for fire retardant safety clothing. There's a boot allowance in here. The street department, while they don't have to have fire retardant gear, they do have to have high visibility safety clothing. So then there's two hundred for that, and the same thing with the boot allowance. And then parks and maintenance, just because they are out there, there's a hundred dollars for, uh, high visibility safety clothing, and the same thing with the boot allowance as well. Those are the big takeaways from it. Uh, but again, these are drafts, and I'd like to kinda hear everybody's, uh, thoughts and opinions on what they think of that.
I truly would like to see a little bit tighter control of our, our clothing allowance. I know that Chief and I had spoken once, uh, a couple of times actually regarding just that, and perhaps when a new officer is coming on, you outfit them, and then when things come up that, you know, we need to go from long sleeve to short sleeve and that, that we go through, they, they come to Chief, that we go through one, um, place to order from, so we def- usually get a discount on, on that, and it's more of a trade-in, you're old for your new kinda thing, and, um, and it just kind of assures, but that, it's different. The police, you know, uniform is much different, although they do have to have some high visibility things as well, but it's certainly different from your electrical department, so I'm not sure how to get that tighter.
This basically is an attempt to, to get a, uh, handle on just what we're, what we're paying for. If you go to the, uh, fire retardant clothing, a sh- a normal shirt is, uh, what, thirty-two, thirty-eight dollars? Sweatshirts, at least a hundred and a half, uh, a hundred and eighty dollars. Coats, jackets, we're required to, uh, to provide this, as well as the high visibility stuff. But we wanna make sure that we've got some kind of a paper trail, and, uh, that we're not providing something that we shouldn't be.
Yeah, so right now, what the, the Clerk's Office already does for the clothing allowance, every employee, they, they, they purchase what they're gonna purchase, and it goes against their, their allot, so they track that.
Right.
Right? But that's what my concern was, the fire retardant stuff didn't really ha- it was like a separate thing, and there was no tracking for it. So this would establish that as something being tracked too. Now, when you talk about the uniform thing, obviously the cops are a whole completely different story. But Dom and I did talk about, and it's not included in this thing here, is if we wanted to go with like a specific vendor for high vis and fire retardant clothing, and then we have a voucher system just with that company. That is an option. Problem, good news with that is, you have one company, everybody's standardized. The bad news with that is, you might be more limited in scope of what you can purchase, because you have that one vendor only. But, so, so that's why that, this policy does not necessarily specify that. I mean, we could talk about it, but again, this is an attempt to, to make our tracking for it better, and making sure that we're actually providing some of this stuff. Anybody have thoughts on that?
No, I would just hope that if you, if, if you were choosing vendor A, B, C, that if they, if they have the fire retardant clothing, that they would have all the requisites, meaning that you would have the pants, the, the shirts, the sweatshirts, the coats, that I don't think that you would be lim- limited. You may be limited in some sizing, I don't know.
So where you at?
You'd have to-
Where you at with the police and looking to find a, a, a specific vendor for, for uniforms?
We hadn't gotten that far unless Chief is doing some on his own.
Okay. Cause if they, if they were large enough that they also had fire retardant, and-
Yeah.
Then ma- then maybe that's the solution, that we use that for all of the city's needs.
Right. And, you know, I know that locally, cause I, I love to shop local, there are businesses in the area who cer- certainly service things like the boots, steel-toed boots, and I'm not gonna mention names, but they're a local, locally owned within the Illinois Valley. Plus, I know optometrists who do the, the safety glasses that have to be prescription. And he has a whole box full of what would fit and not fit. So if you're looking at goggles that have to be at a certain, you know, fit to the face, we do have local optometrists that do that as well.
We provide them a dollar amount, right?
For, for what, right now?
All their clothing allowance?
Just clothing allowance. Right now, the contract just has this three hundred dollar clothing allowance, but it doesn't talk about fire retardant-
Oh, that's-
And that's a dish.
So that's, so that's the problem, is-
We're required.
We, we are, we are required to provide that. So the problem is, electric department says, hey, I need this. So then a, a bill comes across, and you can't really say yes or no to it, because we don't have any stipulation that says how much. So that's why I thought this would be a great basis of, of something like that.
Tracking policy.
Yep, tracking policy, not only that we're providing it, but it's a good tracking po- and we did run it by the IBW, and they were pleased with it. The only thing they didn't like necessarily is that we're in control of it, and we could take it away at some point or modify it. But, again, it's something they don't have right now anyway, so that's why they didn't really throw up any kind of fuss with it. So do we wanna hold off until we see, maybe there's a, do we wanna explore the vendor idea a little bit more, to see if there's something that would match with the cops?
I, I think that'd be a great idea.
Cause if it doesn't exist, like if there's not a vendor out there that can get the, the police uniforms, the high vis, and the fire retardant, all in one large vendor, then I would almost say then we'd be better off just going with, with what it is here, cause it's better than we don't have.
Right.
Anybody else have any thoughts on that?
As long as they give us a discount or they're cheaper. That's all I'm, I, I don't know if they'd be cheaper just because we went, bought all our departments from them, I don't-
Maybe.
I don't know how this business works, so.
Right. You, normally when you buy, I don't wanna say bulk, because we're not that big, we don't, we're not in bulk, but if you, all of your business in one place, they normally give you a certain percentage discount, so, so we may recognize some dollar savings that way.
Okay. So we wanna wait, we'll hold off on this one until we, uh-
Yes.
See if there's a vendor out there, and if not, we'll talk about-
Do we get, do we have a better direction, whether multiple or single vendors? Next on the agenda is discussion on Seneca Square. On what we're gonna do with it, uh, we have to, uh, I think what complicated is that, we've got some tuck pointing that needs to be done on the wall, we've moved some things back, but, uh, we've discussed, uh, buying some picnic tables, uh, a couple benches, and, uh, if we have to, we'll put up a porta potty, uh, if somebody wants, needs to use it. I'm not gonna, don't have a lot of money to spend on, uh, on the thing. Mr. Saunders has passed, um, I've had the building inspected, uh, and had it appraised. I, I don't think, uh, his daughter has a grasp on what it would cost to redo the building. The building is not in good shape, but, uh, but we have to move a, a little bit to, to do something with Seneca Square. I know the, uh, Amy and the Events Committee has been looking at, uh, putting some things together to, uh, to try to, uh, utilize it and make it a, I guess, an attractive focus to have things. So we need to, uh, need to spend some money and, and get some, at least some picnic tables and benches and kinda make it more usable. Instead of having somebody cut the grass every, uh, every co- every week.
Yeah, I, I know the, the wall kinda threw everything off a little bit, so we might be putting a hold on any kind of mural design until we figure out what we're gonna do with that. I know we've, we've already shut down the idea of the, uh, the fountain or the ice skating rink, but I still think, um, we're, we're halfway through the year already, and I know we've had a lot of discussion on this, we have to have the money earmarked this year from it, if we're gonna use any kind of improvements, if we're gonna use it from the TIF. And I would recommend at least starting with, uh, benches, uh, tables, and maybe even some lights. You could debate or not if we wanna have a band stage in the far corner, but I think at least starting with tables, benches and lights would be a great start, it would start making-
And fencing to keep them away from the walls.
So, so the thing is, it, it's, uh, what the engineer recommended was that we have a five-foot offset with it. There's already a gravel thing there with bushes for five feet. I don't know if we need to have a tiny little fence to stop people, there's, in my opinion, there's already, there's already gravel and stuff there. I would say put up a sign that says stay off the gravel, and call it good. If somebody gets hit by a brick two feet away from the wall, they weren't paying attention to the sign.
Jason.
Sorry, that's, that's the realist in me. But it would get us using, it would get us using the park, is, is the goal, I think.
Absolutely, I'm in favor.
We gotta, we gotta do something to, to make the, uh, the park a focus, people come to downtown and, and use it. You know, I don't know what happened this year, uh, to the people that have these band concerts, I guess they just decided to eliminate Oglesby. But anyway, we haven't forgotten about it, we need to try to get some money earmarked for it, and like, uh, to say, we've gotta do it this year. So with that, I'll move on to the next thing on the agenda is continued discussions on forms of local government.
So, we talked about this, this is our last, uh, council, or working meeting, um, so I put it back on there again. Looking at it in a little more detail, I think I had a misconception that you could maintain having commissioned form of government with the strong mayor form. Apparently that is not something that's authorized. I don't think Oglesby is necessarily great for all dramatic, uh, just because of the way we're shaped and stuff like that. But I do think we need to talk a little bit more detail about what we can modify in our ordinances of how we have authorities for commissioners, and this might be a sore subject. I know number sixteen, we're gonna talk about it, and I'm a big believer that there's certain things that's happened in the city over the last several decades, that commissioners have way too much authority to do for our size. And I think it puts the city in a direction of, of negative things to occur. And I don't know the best way to do it, if we can't change our form of government, I'd like to discuss if we could change some of our ordinances that give authorities to the relationship that the commissioners have versus the mayor. I don't know what people think about that.
Or the council.
Or the, the council, correct. I, I, I think there's certain things that, that commissioners have authority to do, and it, it, it causes complications. I, I won't talk about anybody, I'll just talk about my stuff, for example. If, if I were to just start adding water lines anywhere I wanted to in the city, at nineteen thousand dollars, nine hundred per, per cycle, that's gonna put the city in a situation where there's problems. To where we're giving water to whoever we're doing.
Till the council removes you, cause you're doing that.
Correct.
That's always an option.
But what hap- okay, so let me ask you. So you're right, no, you're right. But what happens once it's done? It's already done then. So we could talk about that, that, that happened in the past, that people added homes and stuff to, to the city's water infrastructure. And sure, you could've removed that commissioner from doing that, but it's already done, and you're not gonna take water away from those homes, for example. Same thing where I think, I, I don't, I, we've talked about it in the past, I don't think a single commissioner should have the ability to fire or terminate an employee without some kind of review process. Uh, and I, and I use an example of something I had to do. Granted, we got the union involved, the union steward, the mayor, but if, and none of those people were available, I still would've terminated that person. And, and I, and I'm concerned that if a commissioner has the authority to do that, it could put the city in a liable situation.
I'm happy, personally.
There's, uh, there's always ways that, that we can, uh, improve, uh, our relationship for the most part, a lot of times we'll have a problem, uh, you know, we come to some kind of middle ground so we can move forward. You know, just, just look at ways to how we can function as a, as a council. We all, we're not gonna agree on everything, uh, but let's take and listen to the other person, let's see if there's some middle ground, and what we have to keep in mind, what is the best interest for the people of Oglesby? It isn't, it isn't what's my best interest, or your best interest, what's best for the city and why? If we keep that as our focus, well, uh, we'll get things done.
Well, and I, I guess I, I've always, in, in my line of work, I've had a very autonomous, um, work relationship for many years. How, I'm, I'm thinking of my departments, the fire, ambulance, uh, police, if my ambulance director found that somebody was doing something hinky on her, that's on her staff, I don't think she needs me to terminate that person, or that she needs the council approval to terminate that person. I think she, as the director, should say, you're doing X, Y, Z, you no longer work for us anymore. Because I would trust those people that are, you know, I trust my chief of police and my, and my fire chief and my ambulance director, I trust them to do their job. They don't need, they might ask me for advice or direction, but they don't need me to make those kinda decisions. Now, if I wanted to terminate my fire chief, my ambulance director, or my police chief, and no, I don't want to do, no, I don't wanna do that, then, that's, that's a decision that I feel that I should not be making on my own, even if I have substantial reason to do so. It's, to me, that would be something that I would bring to the council.
I agree. I, I agree, but the, the problem is, you can see that now. What happens, and, and this is why I bring it up now, because we're, we're getting along relatively well, but if, if you guys recall, maybe not so long ago, that always wasn't the case here.
Yeah.
And, and my concern is, I, I absolutely do agree that we wanna work together best And, and my concern is, I, I absolutely do agree that we wanna work together best we can, but what happens when, when there's such a strong difference of opinion and the authority that a commissioner might have is so great that they can't be challenged because they're essentially, they have complete autonomous control over their own departments?
Got it.
You move them to a different department.
So, is that what we're gonna do in every case?
That's what you did the last time.
I'm trying to prevent that from having, I'm trying to prevent that from having to happen.
We can, we can make, put some things in place so, so we don't have a, we don't have some of those issues. Just like when we interview and, and hire people. There's, there's always a better way to do it, and that's what we gotta concentrate on trying to do. Let's find the best way that's best for the city and, and kinda take a look at. We can always improve what we're doing.
As long as we're not micromanaging everything, 'cause that's what we are running towards right now. That's how I feel.
No, I, you know, I don't, I don't, I don't want that either.
I want my people to do what they wanna do without me slowing them down.
My, my concern is-
The more levels we add, the longer it takes and less we accomplish.
I've always been happy with checks and balances, and my concern is, when I've looked at things, not just this administration, but the decades before, I've noticed that some of the problems Oglesby has is because a commissioner did something that was on his own, without some kind of approval of some sort, and it has set the city, and I'm gonna talk about this in great detail when we get to number sixteen.
I know you are.
I, darn right I am, 'cause I'm, I'm really concerned with the number of stuff that's on the agenda. It makes me think I'm about to give up at a level of authority and something's gonna get changed on me here, but, but I, I'm concerned that, that we're, that, that we're so small. We're, we're so small of, of a community, and it's, it's very easy for someone to get elected into a position of, of authority that can actually set the city in a, in a negative path. And I understand we wanna be able to work together and stuff like that, but I, I think there needs to be something with some checks and balances in there.
And I, and I think I understand where you're coming from, because I, I do agree on that. Our, our city engineer said that, you know, when they, certain subdivisions were brought up, that those, the sidewalks were waived. I'm thinking, why were they waived? You know, what, what was the reasoning behind waiving it? Because I only see sidewalks as a good and safety issue, so waiving it would be-
Well, that could've been done via council action. Like, for example, the one I'm aware of, one of the reasons I ran, was they, the council waived the requirement next to the new St. Margaret's Medical Facility that was built. They actually put that in the packet of require, not requiring it. So, the council did approve that at least. Whether or not that was a good idea or not, it was done by council action.
Let's move on. The next on the agenda is revision of the ordinance municipal book.
Oh, yeah. When I was reading through the book, you know, again, I was coming through in the very first section about, let's see, administration and personnel. I found things in there that we don't even, the exist, the position no longer exists. Some of it was written back in nineteen fourteen, original, regarding things like the, let's see, what is, what is he even called here? The, the health commissioner and sanitary officer. That's not me, but it's a health commissioner and sanitary officer and being part of the Board of Health. And I, I can tell you that the Board of Health doesn't even, that, that would dissolve in December of this last year, but there was a, a board, which I was a part of, coincidentally, because of where I work. But they, they, they don't hold true. And so, if they're not true, if they're just adding space and more words to be read in these ordinances, I would like to get rid of those things that are no longer there. So, I don't know the best way of going about doing it unless people just, you know, you look at, we assign to look at the administration and personnel and then send all of our thoughts into one collecting house and then make recommendations on changes from there. 'Cause you can't, it, it's too big of a book to go through line by line in meetings here.
It's a monumental task.
It is.
Carrie, and I see it in all the municipalities I represent. I think the only way to do it is piecemeal, maybe one chapter at a time. And just keep cranking through and pick the ones that are probably most important first and-
Well, I don't know if these are the most important, but if they were chapter one, that's where it started.
Yeah, there's a lot of strange things in here, too.
So, here's my issue. It might no longer be relevant, but we're gonna be paying a city attorney to rewrite all these ordinance or delete them or something along those lines.
I understand what you're saying there. So, how do we pick and, how do we pick those things that are, are more important?
Ones that are any what, somewhat relevant, that affect people today.
The sidewalk.
Yeah, like sidewalk, that kinda stuff.
To me, that's a hot one. It should be the, the hot button.
But anything from nineteen fifteen that we don't, like the dump for-
Nineteen fourteen.
For the dump, for instance, yeah, we can leave it in there. We don't really have anything related to the dump anymore, but why delete if we don't really use it, kinda thing?
There's a very large section in there that talks about, it's where this kinda came up with the employee pays and stuff like that. That was all the stuff that existed before there was a union. I would think with those, we could take that entire section and put one in front of it that says, while the city is under union contract, the following sections are superseded, or something like that. You could update them with numbers or whatever you wanna do, but they'll have no value while the city stays in union contract or stuff. So, that would take out a massive section of everything. And then, and then as time goes by, we could strike, like, the, as far as, but I'm, I'm curious, for example, do we even have reports of births and death certificates?
I do that.
He, do we have it inside the city?
No, I do that, though, as part of my job.
Oh, so I mean, so either-
That I'm the Hygienic Institute, so.
So, that's what I'm saying, things like that, as time goes on, we can either strike it completely or, or make, or just verify that it's rolled into somebody else's role.
And that's why those are there, because I don't wanna give the history lesson, but that Mr. Matheson put in place, the Hygienic Institute in nineteen fourteen, hired these, this medical director who then assigned a health inspector for LaSalle, one for Prue and one for Oglesby, who then in turn made all these ordinances.
Yeah, I see two dates in here, nineteen fifteen and nineteen forty-three, and there's nothing that's been touched. So, so there's quite old, but I, I would recommend starting with those important ones you're talking about, then the big section ones, and then as time goes on, remove one, remove this one, remove that one.
Or saying this, you know, X, Y, Z supersedes this section and not having to rewrite it or delete it.
So, that way, we still have it in case something were to ever change and we would become a non, I don't know why, what reason, but if we ever became a non-unionized city, we have the ordinance there.
I'll bring the nineteen fourteen ordinances Monday night. You can scan.
Yay.
And to make this simpler for my involvement, if you wanted to, if you guys can go through the book and say, this section, this section, this section, this section, all the way through the code, we can eliminate those. We can do one ordinance that says, these are all gone.
Yeah, nice, okay.
Moving on, number fourteen, combine all ordinance for ambulance department relating to wages into one ordinance.
I think that kinda relates to what we were just talking about. I have four ordinances in front of me. One oh five one dash zero one two one one nine, one oh two four dash zero six, one eight one eight, one zero seven zero dash zero seven one five one nine, and one zero two nine dash zero seven one six one eight. And they, basically, it's all about establishing the wage for the ambulance director and for the ambulance personnel, the general wage. And then another one is about transfers, how they are paid for transfers, another for water rescue. I would like to see one ordinance for how to pay, the pay structure for the ambulance personnel and the ambulance director, and then have anything that might, must be specific, such as water transfer or water rescue, or transfers be in exhibit A, exhibit B, and have it one and done. So, we're not having to look at four different things to make sure when we're redoing it at the contract year, that we have to revise for ordinances.
And so, does the ambulance director get the same benefits as everyone else?
Um, well-
The director would be different, but the other three, yeah, I'm totally for it. But usually, we have the directors separate, like, police should separate.
And I, and I understand why that, and I could live with two, but four is just-
Yeah, no, I get the other three, don't worry, I understand that.
So, I have some suggestions, and I can run those past you.
I'd like to see those four ordinances, Carrie. Whether you give them to me or you identify them to Amy, so she can email them to me.
I will, I'll-
That's the place for me to at least start looking.
Okay, if I send you that email, Amy, if you can, thank you.
Next on the agenda, the status of, of Paula Jabon, who's the lady with cats.
And this was up in court, as Carrie knows and as Doug knows. We talked about it after last week's meeting, a week ago Friday, I guess, and she pled guilty to another count of harboring excessive amounts of cats. But as part of that order, she agreed and the court ordered her to remove all but three cats by August first. So, the question now becomes whether she'll do that or not. We'll be there checking probably on August first, I'm thinking.
Yes, we will.
And she has agreed to do that. She's making arrangements to have them moved to a different location, so we just pray that she complies with what she agreed to do and with the court order to do.
Next is, and this is what Jason was talking about earlier, Tridano subdivision, which is the last street, if you go west out there. And it's been a nightmare. Two of the homes are in the city limits and have water and sewer. Five homes out there are out of the city limits and are hooked up to water. Four have no water. The water's to the property lines and would require water hooked up. One owner has two months, and he's requested that he be allowed to tap onto the, to the water. He's willing to annex into the city, but cannot because his property is not continuous. And we'll talk with Jason, and this is where, basically, I have comments. It needs to be a council decision, I'm in the car to fight him. And, and basically, to give you, give you an idea, which Jason has, if you're in the city limits or not in the city limits, you're saving about little sixteen hundred dollars, sixteen seventy-four in property taxes. So, it's a-
If you're, if you're not in the city limits?
Of the one example I used, I, I found two houses that were almost the exact same in value, and I, I broke down the, so you, you should see them. You'll see one where they break down the taxes that they get, and you'll see that the one that's inside city limits has one that says an extra sixteen hundred dollars. So, they do pay less in water, 'cause if you're in the city limits for water, you, you have a lower rate. But if you look and see how much, for example, these two houses pay in water, you'll see that the sixteen hundred dollars in taxes that go to the city are significantly more than any of the water. So, that's, sorry, go ahead.
I'm, I'm sorry.
That's okay, I, I was just gonna say, that's the reason why those other homes there are happy to get the water, but they don't wanna annex in to the city. And, and this is, and this goes back to what my concern was, that a commissioner back in the day, you know, God rest his soul, he had the best intentions for the city, but he extended water lines past the city limits and attached people into it, and that wasn't a council decision to get done. The, the ones that were council decisions, they annexed in. That's what those two properties are there for. I, I think it's a mistake. I, I don't wanna say slap in the face, but it's kinda, I, I think it's terrible for the, the residents that do pay taxes, that you would allow other ones to get the water without having to do taxes. I actually think it, it, it limits the future expansion of the city. If you look at our, our east side borders, we have a natural border of the Vermillion River. Our places that we can expand is to the south, to the west, and to the northwest. And the city has allowed properties along Mormon Street that are outside the city limits, and now the property's out at Cedar Creek, outside the city limits, to attach. Those homes now will never annex into the city. That's, that's the concern. So, you won't be able to expand past there. The same thing with this, this gentleman that has the two empty lots. I don't have a problem if he wants to annex in, I think that's fantastic, but he can't. That's the problem. And so, and the other ones won't, because they already have the water. So-
But when the, when the city extended the water lines to the college, what we did is, we allowed people outside the city to tap onto the water. And I think all made those decisions, I believe they were making them within the best interest of, of the city, what they thought was at the time. How are you gonna get those people to, to come in? Hopefully, at some point in time, they'll see the advantage of that.
I, I think, I don't think that the, the people who approved this intended any wrong or any mal, any wrongdoing, but I, I really don't think they were taking the best interest of the city, looking at the taxes that they're losing out on on an annual basis. I think maybe they were just being kind or nice or accommodating, but not necessarily the best interest of, of what the city needed to be tapped on.
So, this is another past council, we have, can't change it now.
Correct.
The infrastructure's already there.
Correct.
And so, why in God's name would they move into the city of Oglesby to pay seventy hundred more dollars in taxes for water?
That's, that's the problem that we're in.
So, if the infrastructure's already there, I feel like we should get revenue off of it, 'cause we're gonna have to repair it if there's one house, five houses, ten houses.
I dis, I disagree. I dis, I disagree, there's no other way to get them to come into the city, so.
They won't come into the city.
I, I, so then you're just gonna-
We're gonna hope their wells fail?
So, then you're, so then you're, so then you're going to allow them?
It's already there.
Your aunt is one of the ones, she can actually just annex in that easily. She'd be able to get water and sewer, 'cause she's on that side. But it's the other ones that'll never annex in for any reason.
I don't think they'd move into the city for double water rates, anyway. But you should give them the option, 'cause the infrastructure's there.
I, I think it's, I, I think everybody else that pays taxes in the city would, should be upset about that. That's just, that's just my opinion, and I think it limits our future expansion by doing so. I think we need to get away from that. There's nothing we can do about the ones that are already there.
Yeah, I don't think we can change what's there, but I, I don't, I can't see us keeping up this practice, continuing the practice.
And, and again, this is, this is based on why, I don't think that should be my choice or whoever sits in this seat necessarily. I think it should be a council decision. I'm concerned that I wanna give that up, and, and it sounds like I might have a vote against me that I'm, that it's, something's gonna go the wrong way, but I still think it's the right way to do, that it's a council decision, because it has a lot longer lasting effect than just whoever sits, sits on this council this time. 'Cause that'll be something that'll affect four more years, ten more years, fifty years, a hundred years possibly. And all that money is lost in taxable revenue.
And I did check your ordinances on this, Jason, I don't think I told you this before, and there is nothing that indicates that, you know, you can't change it and say, in order to extend utilities outside the city limits, it takes council action. There's nothing to prohibit you.
Yeah, there was no clear way to do it, so the, the water commissioner just, go ahead and, and did it. I, I'm really concerned about, we probably won't have a problem for a while, but at some point in time, if, if you have the thought process that every water line is going to fail at some point in time, I don't know what will happen if one of those water lines that's under a road that the city doesn't own fails. I don't know how that's gonna work. I don't know how we're gonna dig up a road that the city don't own, and that's not gonna be a problem.
How do we dig up Columbia every couple of months?
That's different. That's through, that's in the middle of our city. We have a right to get access to our, uh, infrastructure.
We've only got, what, twenty-eight water pipes?
Yeah, there's quite a few on them.
There's a four-way stuff, but that's why we need to get that water. But I, I think, I think if we need to, if they have council action to resolve it, it would help.
I agree with that, I just hope the council action's the right action, but, but I'm willing to-
As long as you have the right opinion, Jason. Thank you for your comment.
Thank you for your comment to make sure you're, 'cause I remember when we first got in, you wanted to make sure your aunt got water, so.
It has nothing to do with, you're not even gonna tap on.
Okay. So, thanks for your comment.
Thank God you moved here from Iowa.
Let's, whole business, under seventeen, is abandoned property, we're going to go and watch. And we have a property at the end of Florence Street that's a total nightmare for the people that live there. I'd be happy to fit it, it was there, my house. This is where that house was up on stilts for forever. Property has never been properly reclaimed. The person that owned the property has passed on. So, what can we do to resolve that down there for those rooms?
I'm not familiar with what the problem is, Don, but I'll certainly be glad to take a look at it and look at your ordinances. I would assume that you would have the ability, if, if, is the structure in bad shape?
No, the, the structure is down. The, the block was not properly reclaimed.
So, you mean regraded and seeded and?
Right, it's, and, and the, I guess some of the wild critters have taken- Right, it's, and, and the, I guess some of the wild critters have taken over possession of parts of it. Taken by there sometime. We get out of here and still wipe...
I'd be glad to go by and take a look at it, but I'm not familiar with the problem, but I'll take a look at it, see what ordinances you have that might apply. In other towns I've worked at, you know, we give notices to people that we have to clean up this property by a certain date, and if it's not cleaned up, then you'll start to prosecute them under your ordinance, and they can be fined. And, you know, if necessary, the city can move in and clean it up, and you can put a lien on the real estate for the cost of those things. But I can't say I'm familiar with what ordinance you might have in Oglesby, but I'll definitely look at it. But you'll need to identify the property location, so I can go by and take a look.
I, I...
And I may have to work with Doug.
Yes, we'll get it, we'll get it done.
Mm-hmm, absolutely.
So we can get moving and get out of here by eight. Do we have any public comments?
My name is Lisa Kirico, and I wanted to add a few questions and I, or add a few comments, and I did have a few questions, but on number six, with the Reisner Building, the best, best for the city is a lot of the motto I heard today. My husband and I bought a building in twenty eighteen on the two hundred block of Walnut Street. We also have another business at the other end of the two hundred block. Right now, the building that we are revamping only has one storefront. When it is done, it will have four. We have other businesses on that two hundred block of East Walnut, and the parking is terrible. Any day, you could drive down, we have a tavern at each end, we have a barber shop, we have the antique store, you have the laundromat. Just with those in business right now, the parking is not very good. I mean, it's, it's terrible. You add in any three storefronts that we plan on completing, plus, if you added where Gary's TV used to be, that is available for rent, I believe, as a storefront. And then you put in a funeral in the mix, there is nothing there. This was zoned commercial, and any changes I bought when it was zoned commercial a year and a half ago, or whatever, was not to be turned into residential. We're worried about the city, I heard the thirty-five hundred dollars. My question is, or thirty-five thousand dollars, how much did you pay for a lot at Memorial Park? I've seen that lot, it has cement, it has fencing, it has shrubs. How much was that? How much money are we turning to Santa Maria with shrubbing, rocks, fencing? I mean, we want to see the city grow. It's discouraging, very discouraging to see that we can have businesses downtown and no parking. Who's going to want to go? Who's going to want to come to the, who's going to want to come shop?
Just for your information, I've talked to the two landlords that has most of the tenants down there. I've asked them to, to try to help alleviate your problem and the, and the other businesses down there. You know, to, you know, you got parking in the back. Asked them to talk to their tenants to kind of spread their vehicles down the street a little bit, to give you people a break. We can't take the building down right now. We can, you know, get it ready to go, get the asbestos removed, that's, that's in the tar and some shingles. But I went ahead and got some, at least ballpark figures, so people understand what it costs, and, and it's all about dollars and cents. So I, I'm sure that the council will take action and make a decision.
Well, I just wanted to put my comment right now, there is only, I mean, we have potential to put three more businesses in that building. And as it sits right now, and I'm not even talking about the other building, like where Gary's TV was, they have a potential, they have a business there, too. So right now, as it sits, the parking is horrible. And I think that, you know, a parking lot would help alleviate that. And, and the apartment buildings next door have been, at least not in front of the business anymore. So, but that only gives us two parking spots, and on the other side of the road, it gives us one, and there's a fire hydrant. So, and then you put everything else into the mix. I mean, I just want, you know, you're talking about what's good for the city, really think about it. If the downtown's going to be developed at any time, there has to be some parking.
I think that's why it was on the agenda and, and for some discussion.
Okay, well, I mean, there didn't seem like there was a lot of discussion, it was kind of like pushed aside, so I just wanted to make sure that I made a comment, that's all.
Very good, but thank you. Any other public comments? Does commissioners have anything to say?
I have nothing tonight.
Nothing, thank you.
Nothing new tonight.
Nothing.
I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Walker, right?
Aye.
Corrin?
Aye.
Corrin?
Aye.
Wieske?
Aye.
Kavara?
Aye.
I guess I should have made a comment.
Meeting adjourned.
I guess I should have made a comment, I didn't move here from Iowa, but... That's all right, that's all right.
My family's been here for fifty years, I don't wish to...
Hey, Amy, for next week, if you can remember, in addition, we'll have one now. You okay? Okay, and your air bones? And your apple bone?